United States of America and to the Republic or which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number two on the agenda for tonight, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Kate, Gary the second, all in favor? Six oh, thank you very much. Hey, item number three on the agenda, we have some board recognition this evening, we have two very important and vital groups of our school district to recognize tonight, we have the Spencerport School nurses and the Spencerport School teachers to recognize. So I have two statements that I would like to read in recognizing the great work that our nurses and teachers do for our students and our staff here in Spencerport. So I'm going to stand as I read this because this is very important to me. So first of all, whereas all students have a right to learn in a healthy and safe environment, and whereas children today often require specialized medical attention in school, which calls for professional and complex care during instructional hours, and whereas school nurses are devoted to their profession to ensure the well-being, success, and lifelong achievements of all students by providing comfort, compassion, and care. And whereas, school nurses advocate for children and their wellness with the school community, parents, and healthcare providers. And whereas, school nurses serve as members of school-based mental health teams. And whereas, school nurses provide invaluable expertise, support, and guidance in all health-related matters. And whereas, the contribution and tireless work of our school nurses impacts our students and learning community every day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spencerport Central School District Board of Education proclaims today, Tuesday, May 3, 2022, to be School Nurse Appreciation Day. And be it further resolved that the Spencerport Central School District Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our school community to join with with it in personally expressing appreciation to our school nurses for their dedication and devotion to their work, adopted this day of May 3, 2022. Our second recognition is for our Spencerport teachers, again, a very important part of our school district here in Spencerport. Whereas, our Spencerport teachers entered a profession with hopes and aspirations to educate and impact children's lives. Whereas, our teachers do indeed achieve these aspirations with an unwavering commitment to educate each student. And whereas, our teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And whereas, our teachers demonstrate through their instruction that all children can learn, regardless of their learning style, and work to instill a determination and confidence within each student that they can successfully graduate and be citizen, college, and career-ready. And whereas, our teachers continuously challenge themselves in pursuing professional growth opportunities, which in turn benefits students. Whereas, our teachers collaborating on curriculum, pedagogy, and assessment strategies to build on the strengths and challenges of each student. And whereas, our teachers engage students with ever-changing technologies to prepare students for the 21st century. And whereas, our teachers understand their influence on each student and our shared responsibility with families, colleagues, administrators, and the community to prepare them socially and academically for their futures. And whereas, our teachers model and implement the mission every day to educate and inspire each child to love learning, pursue excellence, and use knowledge, skills, and attitudes to contribute respectfully and confidently in an ever-changing global community. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spencerport Central School District Board of Education proclaims May 2 through 6, 2022, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Spencerport Central School District Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our school community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work, adopted this day, Tuesday, May 3, 2022. I'd like to also say that for both our nurses and our teachers here at Spencerport, as I continue to think about how education has gone through so many changes over the last couple of years, and as we know, there's so many moving parts to this, these two groups of people, I think of three Cs, and the three Cs I think of is they're very caring, they're very collaborative, and most importantly, I see them as courageous. You know, with some of the changes and the challenges that both of these groups have gone through over the last couple of years, I cannot express my sheer appreciation and respect for all the work that these two groups of people have done for our learning community. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the Spencerport Teachers Association and our Spencerport nurses for the high-quality work they do on a daily basis. Any other comments? Thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is privilege of the floor, and I believe we do not have any privilege of the floor this evening. So our next agenda item is the consent agenda. As you know, we received a certificated addendum, so at this point, I would need someone to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to accept the consent agenda to include the certificated addendum.
Lori, second, any other questions or thoughts? All in favor? Six oh, thank you very much. Okay, Board of Education reports. Since we just met last week, I really don't have too much to share, I would just like to thank Marcy and her team for doing a great job with our meet candidate night tonight. That was a very, very informal setting that all community members can take a look at, even if they weren't here tonight. I'd also like to thank all the community members that decided to come out tonight. I remember when I went through this six years ago, the room was packed and I was sweating. But it's a great experience, I think, for everybody and a great opportunity for our community to meet our candidates for these very, very important positions that are going to be voted on coming up in just a couple of weeks. Other than that, any other reports around the table?
I'm just going to throw out the MCFBA stuff that got legislated tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, and then there's an executive committee. No, there's a board leadership meeting tomorrow night.
Ah, yes.
Okay, all right. And then, again, just a pitch for the annual meeting at the end of the, end of the month over at Ridgemont stuff, so if anybody could come to that, that'd be great. Marcy and Lynette, thanks very much for the board candidate night. Well done, thanks.
Just real quick, nothing important, but I noticed Miss Swan changed the format for your district news, it's a little fancy, that's a nice format like that. Yeah.
We liked it a lot. Actually had other parents comment, too. I did, I will just say, I did attend the, as Miss Swan, the Spencerport Education Foundation meeting yesterday, which is a nonprofit organization that provides some grants to teachers in our district. And it was a great group of people that I hope to attend more in the future. So if you have any questions, do now.
Yeah, they do an amazing amount of work to support our learning community, so.
And if you know anybody, they're looking for additional members, so look it up, your friends.
Great, okay. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent, Miss Swan, for our superintendent's report tonight.
Thank you. Few agenda items, we're going to start with our policy review, so Jonathan is making his play up. So we have really stayed true to our plan and we're working through these policies, and I appreciate the board's participation as well as Jonathan's facilitation.
Thank you, thank you everyone for having me. Been a week, this was a slightly more reasonable package of policies, but to date, I've not received any questions regarding the content of the policies.
Yeah. I had some.
Yeah.
They're in the board.
The policy.
Yeah.
Just realized we had reverted back. Okay. I can address some now if you want, or I can put something together and.
So, I don't know, I don't know if this, this will help, but I sort of took some notes on some of the questions that you asked. So Lori, there was something, you had a question on policy 7130 in regards to some new language.
Oh, so there was new language that made it sound like if a district employee other than the board, am I doing the right direction?
Yes.
If the district employee other than the board made a determination as to whether a student could attend Spencerport schools, they would have to put that in writing. But then it seemed like the Board of Education wouldn't have to, so I just thought that new language was a little confusing, and I wasn't sure what point we were trying to get to yet.
Was that language that we added, or was that the regular text that Erie wanted?
It was underlined.
It was underlined.
So maybe there was a word or phrase missing that I just wasn't quite understanding what the concept was that we wanted to put in there.
I can, I can double check that, we did transfer some language from another policy into that to make sure we did not lose anything.
Okay.
Essentially from our old policy into that, so that we did not lose anything, but if we lost something in that, then I will have to double check that.
Okay, good, do you have any other hints for it?
I can go in order by policy, or I can go in order of people that had specific.
I was like, I can't pull.
Leah, you on policy 7530, which was a child abuse and malt treatment, I believe, you had a question about the timeline for reporting, wasn't specified?
Yes, does it need to be? I think we had. I think the word that was in the policy was.
Reasonable or timely or something like that, I would have to check to Erie one, because that, so that was from Erie one, what their either best practice is, or what's legally required. I don't know if there's a timeline set the way there is with DASSA, DASSA sets a specific timeline for reporting to the supervisor. I don't know if that's the same for the child abuse policy, but we would want it to be something that took into account the best interest of the child.
There was some word in, gosh, I'm going to figure if, I don't know, sometimes. Mostly good at that. If we just looked into if there was a difference, if there should be a word used other than just timely, do you have it up?
Promptly was the, was the word.
Is it what's in the policy?
That's in your, in your question. You have it in quotes promptly, so. As soon as you suspect the written reports need to follow. All right, I can, I can look at that, if, if the Office of Children's Family Services has a specific timeline, then I think.
I mean, the Office of Children's Family Services, that's what, I think they have, what was it, as soon as possible, or something, as soon as.
As soon as you suspect.
Looked at wording a little better than promptly, personally, but not.
I will, I will look at that, that does seem.
What's the next one?
You had a question on policy 7552 in regard to student gender identity, in regard to the name change for grandparents, I believe.
In our policies, it said. You know, there was certain records that would have to be maintained unless it was a name change, the given name would be used on all records. But in school policy, they could use a chosen name. I was wondering what about the terms of the yearbook?
I would have to check with the. We have an advisor for the yearbook, I'm not sure what the standards would be for that.
Because it wouldn't be an official legally mandated document, but my understanding is in the past, it doesn't. The name change isn't allowed if it's not an official name change, so I just wanted to clarify that for the policy.
Can you just say that for one minute? It's your understanding that what?
My understanding that in the yearbook, there, if there has been an official name change. Like a legal name change, that the given name is used instead of a chosen name. But our policy states, other than, it was like medical records, school, school testing, you know, all of those kind of official documents would be the ones that they had to be used in, and so I just wanted to clarify if the yearbook counts in that or not.
I have an opinion, but we'll make sure.
I don't know the actual.
Yeah.
It's a good question.
Yeah. And also the legal counsel.
Exactly. 7580.
Okay, in policy 7580, you specifically said that the superintendent would have, would be permitted to seek legal counsel. I've forgotten what context it arose in, but I was wondering why we had to explicitly state the right, because my position would be that the superintendent should always be permitted to seek legal counsel whenever she feels it's necessary. And that if we stated in one policy without stating it in other policies where a need to consult legal counsel might come up, then we're, we're just kind of being inconsistent.
Yeah, right. Yeah, how do you differentiate what policy you can and can't?
Right, if it's not said then you can.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, if that came from Erie one.
Yeah. There may be a reason why you added it, so you could report that.
I think we just carried that over.
Okay.
But I understand your opinion, it is, in a way, necessary.
I have another one though, off top, I have a write note on, it's the 7540. There was one on, in relation to suicide, there was a, like a multiple disciplinary group?
Yeah, so.
Check it out.
When we were reviewing this with this policy with Erie one, Tim and I were doing it, we had the same question, I checked with Erie one, and it's more of a best practice. What they had in there was a. But we don't have a dedicated. Group assigned to response, to respond to just as, we have a TIC related group, we have school counselors that are trained to handle those kind of situations, but we don't have an entity itself that's just dedicated to that. Erie one said it's not legally required, it's just something that they have put in policy. When Tim and I were doing it, change, change the language to fit what we have right now.
And the district felt that that was sufficient, assuming.
So people who are TIC trained, part of the TIC training does encompass suicide intervention and response, so I think that that would be really appropriate for that committee to respond to any needs that may arise in regards to suicide. I think I have one last question about.
Yes, policy 8450, a certified teacher.
Yeah, there's underlined, new underlying language that said that the tutor needed to be a certified teacher, and I, if that's a requirement, then I'm fine putting that language in there, but in, as years progress, and there could be a teacher shortage, I don't want to put in our policy that it must be a certified teacher, if in fact, it could be somebody with a four-year degree or a teaching assistant, or somebody who's not quite yet certified.
I believe that is in current policy, and I think it's required.
Okay.
We're deleting 7643, so I pulled that seven seven included it in 8450, because it just seemed like a 7643, it kind of seemed unnecessary. So that, when my, when I was looking into it with Tim, he said that that is required.
Okay.
And so.
No, that explained it, I was just wondering why it was newly underlying language, but the deletion of the 7643.
And the last one on prevention instruction? Did I jump ahead again?
Yeah, Leah, you had a question about 8210 with safety considerations and prevention construction in regards to the aid statement?
Yeah, our language is taken directly from, like, the New York State regulations on that policy. I was wondering if it. I attached two other policies in there, it just, it doesn't have to be done now, we can just take one of them. Yeah, if we could take a look at it, I don't love. I, it is directly from the law, the law language seems a little outdated, in my opinion, for what would board language would be. So if you could just take a look at it and see if it's possible, I put two other district policies, I think, they had wording that was still in line with obviously the regulation, but yet.
A little more.
A little more. Sorry, I should have sent a chat in email, saying the notes were in there.
According to my notes, I think that was all the questions that people had at this point. I guess the only thing that, that I'd like to add to this is that this has been an incredible process, you know, going through this and really getting deep into the weeds and the great questions that people are asking, so that these policies are up to date and truly aligned with what we're doing here in Spencerport. Just to talk a little bit about the process, and you did a great job of thinking on your feet tonight, thanks for that, Jonathan. I know that he sends us the policies in an email, and you consolidate them, that's a great way for my learning style to remember to do that. I just, I go through that email first, and then I go into the board policy manual on the one note to see what people's comments are, so it would probably, you know, when new policies come out, should probably look at both things. I know that sometimes people will ask questions through email. If you do that, great, but if we do it in the one note, we should probably make sure Jonathan knows.
Yeah, I'll look to that, we just.
Just so that you're not having to think on your feet, but your feedback's.
Well, I, I was more concerned with getting behind.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think I'd rather address the questions now and then get back to you if there are follow-up questions, so that we stay on track.
So, so Jonathan, overall, we're, are we moving at a good enough pace with this right now?
I am.
Where are we in the process?
I am in the process of going through all of our, all the policies and keeping track of, see, see what we have to finish up with. I still have some for the seven, a group that Tim O'Connor and I went through, some that Ty and I have gone through, I might be able to get all those into one meeting, and then we have a group of policies that we kind of put off. Okay, title nine, sexual harassment, I gotta work with Jamie on a couple of those, some bigger ones that we were waiting for more guidance from the federal government, I don't believe we've gotten yet, you haven't seen an update on that. So those will essentially be adopted in with the new manual, and then we'll have to come back and revisit some of those. The sexual harassment policy, we've already got the, the New York model in place that was from a couple of years ago, but that's been revised, so we've hit more, everything we're required to have, now it's, we'll be then looking through the manual to see what Erie one has really updated over the last couple of years, so there might be some new things with that.
Fantastic. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns about the policy review initiative? Jonathan, anything else, sir? Nope, that's good, okay. Thank you.
The next agenda item has to do with our strategic planning, I had shared PDF version of this presentation a few weeks ago in news and notes, but I wanted to share the process with the board because the board members are obviously part of the strategic planning process, and wanted to talk a little bit about how this also coincides with our P12 master planning for our capital improvement project. So as we've been talking all year, we've really identified collectively the need to reengage in our strategic plan, and so part of my thinking over the past few months was how do we take the best of what we have, and which is, I think, some pretty good bones in regards to mission and vision, and how do we engage in a plan that's efficient and effective to us and meaningful? And why plan? I think we're now at a time, as we're coming out and transitioning from the pandemic, as well as preparing for our capital improvement projects, it's really just the optimal time to start to bring people back together and recalibrate where we're at and where we want to be. So during this process, we want it to be a process that's building trust, collaboration, cooperation. We want it to be a safe process and inviting process, one that builds confidence in our long-term planning. I think one of the candidates mentioned, I can't remember, I'm sorry, Gary, if it were you, but also this process allows us to acknowledge that we always have room to grow and improve, and where those efforts will be, it will provide us direction and a collective focus. So I know that these are two quotes that are often used, just in regards to strategic planning, but really it gets to the heart of, of what we're trying to accomplish, and what gets measured gets done, where our efforts are, where our intentionality is, is where we'll find success. So again, this process really starts with the philosophy, what do we believe in our district, what do we believe about student learning, our community, where we're headed? Those beliefs then help guide the decisions and the choices that we're making. If we are moving with intentionality, we will often find success. However, if our actions are in the default, which is sort of in the day-to-day movement, and, and I often, I love Brendan Burchard, who is a strategic organizational psychologist who often says, be done by one, meaning really focus on the most difficult things that you need to work on by one o'clock in the afternoon, it's really about intentionality, how will you frame every single day with what's most important? And that's really around this strategic planning, how will we frame and be intentional in what we're doing to avoid failure of our goals? So again, in regards to the process, what I'd like the board to know is when I looked at different strategic planning processes with different consultants, I looked at quality. Will the plan improve our outcomes for students? I mean, that is the, the bottom line, we want a strategic plan that's really focused on improving outcomes for students, helping to develop relationships in the district, and building collaboration. How practical will the process be? We want to make sure that it's a reasonable process, I think I had shared with you, in looking at strategic planning, many people peter out because the process can often take so long, a year, a year and a half. This process through the NISCOS called the blueprint is a practical process, I think it's reasonable and can be really effectively implemented. I do believe, as I've looked at outcomes and strategic plans from other school districts, that they're often really relevant strategic plans and action plans, meaning that they are often referred to evaluated and presented on, and that's what we, we want to make sure that we're focusing here. Is it a supportive process? You know, so again, will the people who will be involved in the process feel like, oh, it's one more project, or something that they could really dive into and sink their teeth in? And the efficiency, can we afford to do it? When we look at consultants and bringing in support around strategic planning, there is a cost associated with it. This blueprint process from NISCOS is both seasonable, and it is facilitated by three superintendents who have facilitated the process across the state of New York. So here's a little bit of what the process looks like. It really begins now, and that is bringing the board into the process, helping the board understand it, because you're a key partner in the process, and then it's developing community feedback. So this strategic process uses the software Thought Exchange, we've had the vendor come in and present to our administration. We've had the vendor come in and present to our administrative cabinet. What's different about Thought Exchange, if you are familiar with it, unlike a form where districts may develop certain questions that they want to ask to the community. The questions that are posed to the community will be very open ended. And community members are allowed to not only respond to the question, but to respond on the thinking and the thoughts of other community members. And so what typically happens is you really get this synergy and pathways that of of feedback and input that maybe you didn't think to ask. And so you're not bound by the static questions that a more traditional form type of approach would utilize. So again, we would go out with the community with a thought exchange, really solicit feedback from our community in regards to our district, what our strengths are in in areas of of growth. We would then come together as a board and an administrative leadership team. And we would really work together, admin council and the Board of Education, looking at our mission, our vision and our core values. And so again, when I spoke to my colleagues and some of the consultants to facilitate this, this is an area where I said, I really think we've got a good foundation, something to build upon. And so this would be work to really deepen and revisit our mission, vision, core values and start to come collectively together to recalibrate in that area. After we did that as a board and a leadership team, the next part of the process is to bring in a much larger stakeholder committee. So between 50 and 75 people. And those would be strategic partners, community members, teacher leaders, obviously our administrators, the board. And we would work together to develop objectives and strategies, really the what to do in our strategic plan.
Chris, what does that look like, though? Fifty to seventy people ever?
Yeah.
Or is it breaking people into?
I'm going to show you just a brief agenda of that in the next slide. So that's about a five hour day where we work together. After taking that feedback, what we need to do in our strategic plan, we come back as a leadership team and we start to develop the how around our strategic. So Gary, just want to make sure that I get to your question. So a little bit of the timeframe of the process. We'd like to try to begin this work this summer. So we would be going out and developing in the next few weeks thoughts around the Thought Exchange in order to get what they call a temperature check of the community. In August, and we're proposing our administrative retreat, we'd love to partner with the Board of Education and our administrative team in doing that first stage, that review of mission, vision and core. We then would look to bring that large group, that fifty to seventy five people together in the month of September to develop the what around our strategic plan. And then October, again, the leadership would develop the how, the when, the who, the real, the nuts and bolts. We'd look to come to the board around November or December with our strategic plan and our and our tangible action items for adoption. And we would update the board quarterly in regards to our process and our our growth. They shared the timeframe or the projected timeframe because it will help us also move into our K-12 master planning for our capital improvement project. As we started working and interviewing architects, many of the architects asked, where is yours? You know, can we have your strategic plan? We want to start to build upon what you envision your instructional spaces to look like and where the district is going long term. We know, having met and started having mapping out with our new architect, the K-12 master planning, that will probably start that work in January or February. So this timeframe would allow us to really comprehensively engage in our strategic plan, including developing where we want to go instructionally, which then would allow us to anchor in to that vision as we start to think about our capital improvement work. So just a little bit of the nuts and bolts. Again, our first step is sort of discussing with the board, having you be comfortable and understanding the process. Niscos would work with us to set dates for our plan and we would launch the exchange. This is just a sample letter of what that message to the community would be. And again, you you can see in the top paragraph that we really keep those questions open ended. What's working well in the district? What can we build upon? What does our future look like? Where where do we see ourselves?
Does this go to, excuse me, sorry, does this also go to staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would. So again, as we come together, this is a little bit more of the specifics. When we work with our administrative council and the board, again, we would review that data. We would have some of that community information. We would be discussing priority areas and again, really focusing on mission, vision and core values. And going to share this part, I think, Gary, this is where we would come together as the larger group, so that fifty to seventy five person committee. We would review again the mission, vision, collective values. But again, we wouldn't be wordsmithing at this point. That would be the work of the board and the leadership group. But then we would have, we would review that, we'd have our larger group weigh in on that. And then we kick off the day with what Niscos calls a five minute of frame presentation. And it's really celebrating what is happening in each of our six buildings. We would review the priority areas that we would have discussed as a Board of Education and Leadership Group with feedback from the community. And we would really start to develop objectives for those priority areas. So this would look like a sample agenda of what that would look like in the facilitation. So again, we open, we connect with one another, we build our team. Five minutes of fame, so that's a focus on each building. Priority groups then would really hash out what needs to be done, what needs to be focused in our strategic plan. Again, we would revisit early on just mission, vision, core values. What the community said, how does that translate that feedback into our plan? And then we would share out the what around our focus as a full group. And I shared, not my concern, but a question with, you know, our colleagues who facilitate this. And I was speaking with Kevin McGowan in Brighton and I said, Kevin, can you really get this done in four hours? And he said, Kristen, I guarantee you, you can. It is, it's tight, it's tightly facilitated. We facilitated across the state and it's really amazing the amount of work that gets accomplished in those four hours with that type of large group. So again, going back then in regards to the action planning, I think what's really nice and what resonated with me in this process is that we own it. Niscos helps to facilitate the process. But there's a lot of opportunity for ownership and individualizing the process. Again, we define what needs to be done, determine who does it, decide when it gets done. And so this is just an example then of a really clear action plan. It's it's not fancy, it's not laden with pictures, but it's a real live document that articulates what needs to be done, how it's going to be done, when it's going to be done and who's responsible and who's recording out and and in really sharing the development of the tangible action items. So again, I I looked at different processes. Why I'm recommending this blueprint process for our organization is I found it to be incredibly collaborative. I had spoken to superintendents, most recently a school district that finished their strategic plan this winter. Talked about the the large group, talked about the thought exchange, felt that it was a very collaborative process, a lot of community buy in. Really helped to anchor in shared missions and goals and values. I think what really resonated with me is that it's practical. I have facilitated and participated in numerous strategic plans. And I can just share one area of frustration that I always have is sitting in a room for hours on end and wordsmithing a mission statement. When, you know, what we really want to get is into the tangible heart of the strategic plan. Again, I think more now than ever is an opportunity to unite all stakeholders of the school district, our community, our teachers, our administrators, our our staff, our operational. So I think it's really an opportunity to unite the community. You know, Kevin McGowan would say, it's done for you, but by you, meaning it is helpful to have an outside facilitator. And it would allow me and other members of our administrative council to be active participants in the process. And it's efficient. There is state aid. It is ran by Niscos. It's a proven methodology and format. And I think it will be helpful for the school district. So I wanted, again, just to bring the board into the process. And certainly if there are any questions, I'm I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you might be thinking about.
The biggest one you already hit on was not sitting in a room and re.
Yeah, yeah.
Works and stuff and right, but getting past that into actual work.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, that's that's huge.
Was there any feedback about how cumbersome the survey is for families?
I have only heard positive things about Thought Exchange, Leah. So the superintendent that I mentioned that I connected a few weeks ago. They had great community buy into the Thought Exchange. What's nice about the program and we learned when the vendor came to Spencerport to show us is that a lot of those answers start to generate things within the system. So, you know, the data analysis is easy and you know, school districts or many school districts in our region that are already utilizing Thought Exchange. So I think even what I've heard today in regards to our candidate forum to really get the feedback from the community and and what the community is thinking and desiring for the future, I think would be really helpful.
Is there?
I, no, I was, bizarrely, I was in Tennessee this weekend, but ran into was ran into literally somebody from upstate who was talking about a survey their district sent, which was this process. They kept saying, no, the questions kind of generated itself into a different question. So they thought the process was, they really liked the process, but I didn't know in terms of time, how long it was kind of like it was cumbersome for family. They liked the the dialogue that happened. You know, I just hope that people don't feel like, oh, how we've done a survey, it's gonna take forever. Do you know what I mean? So.
I could only share what I know in regards to the process, the Niscos process. And that's actually part of the process where there's quite a bit of positive feedback around.
And so it kind of leads in my question. What is a communications plan that goes along with pre-launch, up to launch, follow up, closing and stuff? Is there?
There is.
Are those pieces all in place?
Those pieces are in place. They're developed for the school district. Of course, we individualize it, adapt it to to meet our needs. But that's part of the facilitation and the development of the process.
Can I just ask the the district that you said just finished theirs last, it was last winter they did it?
They finished this past December.
For the large group, I know that we have ways that we have done, you know, cultivated a group for things like this before. Is it volunteer? Are we reaching out? Or, you know, do we want specific people? How are we going to go about that?
Well, we haven't, I haven't gotten there yet, to be honest with you. Kate and I would probably talk to our facilitator about that. But I think probably a combination of of what you just talked, I mean, certainly we would want volunteers and volunteers from the community. But we also want to be strategic. We have a number of teacher leaders and and team leaders that take on that role for us and really serve to be the voice of their groups. So we would want to make sure that those teacher leaders are part of this process.
We also have building, building team.
Yes.
People that definitely be an important part of this process when we think about building planning teams. You know, I, you know, when you talk about reuniting, you know, coming out of a pandemic and reuniting. I look at this also as a as an opportunity, the word that comes to me is reset. You know, it's an opportunity for the whole learning community to reset again, you know, and to look at, you know, what is, what is our mission? What what do we want to do? How do we want to get better and identify those areas of strengths and those areas to improve? You know, it's all about continuous improvement. And I think there's a lot of opportunities here. But this is going to look different. You know, this this is going to be look different. We haven't done anything like this in quite some time. And I think your point for the communication, that communication piece in advance is going to be critical to get people to buy into the process. Then when those questions do come out to community members, it's not your typical survey and what the approach will be and the purpose of this. You know, when people feel in the learning community that it is a reset or an opportunity to reunite. I think I think more people are going to buy into the process. It's it's important.
I just one last question. Is there there's quarterly, you know, feedback back to the board? Is there an opportunity for, I'm thinking particularly staff, to give feedback within the process?
The process of the strategic planning or the or feedback in the strategic plan itself in the work?
I guess in the work. So like, once the strategic plan is developed, you know, kind of looking at it thinking like, we think this is going to be great. And then something gets launched, right? And Steph says this is going to go well. I just want to make sure that there's an opportunity for staff to be able to say, is there a plan in place for that to happen? For them to be able to say, this isn't, this isn't working out the way that we thought.
Right. So is there flexibility ahead?
I mean, is there further surveys or is there, is it already built into the system?
Okay, now I'm following you. So yes, there is. There's there's different feedback loops throughout the process and after the process. So then when you're rolling out your strategic plan and you're fine tuning it, what are those feedback loops? And that is part of the process that's developed. Well, thank you. So again, I I invite the board because we're going to try and solidify with our consultants, the board and leadership kickoff, which will hopefully be at our administrative retreat, which I shared those days in. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we're at the end of our superintendent's report and we're at the meeting evaluation. Any feedback, any thoughts, questions? Good work. Jonathan, thanks for all the work with the policies. Thank you. And Kristen, thank you for the strategic planning on stage, you know, as you continue to forward. Any other questions, thoughts before we move on? Fantastic. Stone, would you like to lead us into our next session here?
And we enter executive session.
And we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing employment history of a particular person.
On favor? Six oh, thank you very much.